Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Paramount Planning Commission meeting to order for October 12, Please join me with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or Whitschistans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego.
Here.
Commissioner Bautista.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Chair Weisenberger.
Here.
Item number one, approval of minutes. Need a motion to approve.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to approve the minutes.
The Sparza will second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bautista. Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Item number two, proposed water rate increase.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. In the audience tonight, we have our Assistant City Manager, Andrew Vialponto, and we have our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, and then Anthony Martinez, a management analyst too, and they're going to be giving a presentation on water rate increase.
Thank you, John, and hello, Chair Weisenberger, Vice Chair Gutierrez, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Andrew Vialponto, nice to meet you all, I'm the Assistant City Manager. Before I jump into the presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't give just a little bit more background. I started with the city of Paramount in January of 2020, so last year, right before COVID. Don't be mistaken, I didn't bring COVID to Paramount, but I definitely missed out on that whole year of getting to meet all of you, and usually, new employees, we spend our time at city events, you know, getting to know all the commissioners and the residents, and so I missed out on all that. So this is kind of chapter two of my start here, and I hope, look forward to working with you all a lot more. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump into my presentation here, and as John mentioned, I do have our senior analyst here, Anthony Martinez. He's been instrumental in helping put this presentation and all of the content together in this. I'll try to make this very brief, but also, it's going to be very informative, so you'll have plenty of time for any questions you might have. But ultimately, what we want to accomplish today, what I want to go over today is just to give you an in-depth look into our water system, how it works, and I'm going to give you some context, and hopefully that will help you, and help all of us, learn a little bit more about our water system and where we're currently at. Ultimately, what I want to give you kind of a quick overview also of what our financial situation is with our water utility, what some anticipated rate adjustments would mean, and how they would impact the financial situation that we're in. But ultimately, by the end, what I hope you take away from this presentation is, you know, understanding the benefit of what we have here in Paramount, of basically locally sourcing our own water. This is something that's common in cities, but it's not every city that owns its own water utility, and I'll get into that, if that sounds a little bit odd, I'll get into that in a moment. So locally sourcing versus the option of purchasing imported water, which is an issue that we're dealing with right now, and again, I'll dive into that in a moment. Hopefully, you'll leave here also with a better understanding of where we compare to our neighboring cities, because that's a very important measuring stick, as well as how we, what our plan is, is staff to present recommendations on how we can improve our financial situation. So with that, let's, let me just start at the beginning, though, and kind of just talk some stats and get a better understanding of the full context of what our water system consists of. So Paramount Municipal Water System delivers an average of 6 million gallons of high-quality groundwater daily to Paramount water customers. As I mentioned, most of our water is locally sourced, it's extracted from massive aquifers about 200 feet below the surface. Our water, before it gets into your faucet, undergoes an extensive testing process before being delivered. It involves, what our system holistically involves is pumping water from wells, which is what we call production or supply, distributing our city, our water through our city-owned water pipes, and then, of course, things that may, are the, kind of the soft, the intangibles, the things like our water customer service, the people, the labor that are behind actually getting the water from its source to your faucet. Here's just some stats that you'll see on the frame right here. We manage over 7,500 water accounts, we have over 130 miles of water pipes, 2,300 water meters, 1,400 fire hydrants, 50 drinking fountains, so, you know, go to your park, you see a drinking fountain, we actually manage and operate those. Three water wells. So talking about water wells real quickly, we only have one currently that is in active operation. A second well is currently undergoing testing, and the third well is currently under construction, that's well 16, the one under construction, it's off Garfield and Jackson. Thank you. This third well is expected to be in operation early next year, so we're hoping to get that one up running, and as you'll see, hopefully, in this presentation, every single water well is such a critical component to our water system, that is where we actually pump and get water from, which ultimately is, would be city-owned, and as you'll see, hopefully, will bring in some revenue and save us some money in the long run. So with that, what's our current situation? You probably heard this in the news, and it doesn't take a very sophisticated person to know that water is such an important commodity. California is no exception, water just around the world is scarce, and we're all doing our best worldwide to manage what we can with the list limited resource. And just, you know, on average, in the U.S., each person consumes about 400 gallons of water per day. That's about 100,000 gallons every 250 days, I'm sorry, that's a family, 400 gallons per day. 100,000 gallons in a 250-day span for family is about the equivalent of about 20 semi-trailer trucks, so that's a lot of water. And the sobering reality is that the cost to pump, deliver, and manage our water in California is just increasing. You'll see, you'll see that percentage up there, I'll explain where that number comes from, but on average, we're increasing. Here in Paramount, our water, the cost to do all of this, to run our water system, to deliver it, is increasing 4.3% every year, year over year. What we aim to do is, you'll see there's a ratio there, 95% to 5%, it's a formula that works for our Paramount water system. What we aim to do, our goal is to locally source 95% of our water while only importing 5%. Couple reasons for that. One, importing waters costs twice as much. It's because now you're talking layers on layers and layers of other entities involved. We purchase it through a middleman, Central Water Basin, who purchase it from Metropolitan Water District, who imports it from Colorado River, so it just keeps getting, it just kept exponentially more money to import it. Other cities have different formulas that make their water system efficient. This is a formula that works for us, 95 to 5, so you'll hear that come up again. Now, we've had to purchase in recent years significantly more water, import it, only because I mentioned to you those wells are offline right now, we, it's so important that we get those wells, that new well up and going, because right now, we're honestly probably like at more of a 60/40. We're pumping 60% of our local water, purchasing about 40% at twice the amount. So that's only a temporary measure to get us to get the water to your faucet, it's not a long-term solution, not at all. Cost increases have put us about $3 million in deficit in the water fund. If nothing changes, we can't pay for our water system by the end of the year. Now, I should say, it's important, that doesn't mean water's going to stop flowing, but as you'll see in a few slides, there's some consequences to that. So water will continue to flow, but there are other consequences that come up, and I'll talk about those. But first, I mentioned to you water fund, and I'm just going to give you a quick, 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 brief tutorial on this and what this means. So the city, generally like a checking account, we really operate most of our city services through our general fund. This is where we get money from our general fund, our, your basic transaction and use taxes, you know, service rates, other miscellaneous revenue, and I'm sorry about the, we have to figure out, Anthony, the, yeah, so, yeah, there's a little bit of trying to fit on the screen here, so it kind of messed up some of the wording, but that's middle, that middle box is what we call restricted funds. These are, this is another type of account that the city has, account that the city has, that's funded by, you know, grants, very restricted types of funding, special taxes, special rates. These are things that, like, you know, if we get a state or federal grant, it's very specific or restricted on what we can use that for. Then we have our water fund, what is otherwise known as an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds obtain revenues from water rates, water grants, water loans, which I'll talk about in a moment, but in the end, it's a municipal water fund, it operates a little bit like a business. So, you know, a few examples of the water fund, of enterprise funds could be like if a city owns an airport, right? You got to kind of raise revenues to pay for those services. Golf courses, those are sometimes run like a business, so those are considered enterprise fund, and here you'll see like a water fund, any municipal water organization has a water fund. Not all Paramount residents pay into the water fund. Unlike the general fund, which all residents do, right, through your property taxes or sales tax, not every resident is served by the Paramount Water Utility. I'll talk about that in a bit when I bring up the map. So it's very, very important, though, to note that the Paramount Water Fund is a municipal water agency, meaning that the state requires that we not make a profit, we simply have to be able to pay for our expenses. So basically, not be in deficit, not make a profit, just provide our water customers with water and be able to pay for that. So here's the map of our water customers. On the left, you'll see in blue, those are all of the residents that are served by the Paramount Water Utility, that what I've been talking about so far. There is a small percentage of residents in the northern end of town that are served by a private water company called Water, Golden State Water. This is just because they own those pipes beneath the surface, they serve those pipes. I'll show you in a few slides, when we talk about the rates, how their rate compares to ours, it's pretty striking, and then on the right-hand side, this is an actual map of our, of all the water lines, or water pipelines, which I mentioned is about 130 miles worth of pipelines. Okay, so what do your rates pay for? It comes down to two things, delivery and supply. It pays for delivering water, so actually, you know, the water maintenance of it, distribution, fire hydrants, water valves, actually sourcing the water, or actually delivering the water to your faucet, and then supply, actually getting the water, extracting the water out of it, testing the water, maintenance of the water. These are basically the two pillars of what make up, you know, what our expenses for the water rate. So it breaks down to about 59% of costs, what it costs to supply the water, take the water, and then deliver the water is about 41%. So here is, earlier I mentioned that, you know, water expenses are increasing. We hired a water expert, a water consultant, to review our current rates and our rate structure, to estimate what the future expenses would be in order to successfully maintain our water system and keep it under local control. The study revealed two alarming facts. One, water expenses are increasing at least 4% per year over year, that comes out to about $368,000 a year. The second thing that we realized is that the current rate schedule, so not the actual dollar amount of rate, but the way the rate is structured, the way, you know, the schedule of how we apply the formula to bills, is it can't pay for our ongoing, our current expenses and ongoing maintenance and repairs. So that's, that's an issue here. I want to bring your attention to the fact that the rates have remained unchanged for five years. We haven't changed the rates since 2016. The schedule itself, the way we bill, hasn't changed in 20 years. The expert found that it's just simply too complicated, the way our schedule is formulated, it's not consistent with national standards, and if you see to the right, this little image here, let me explain it to you, this is an example, for instance, of why it's, these rates and these schedules are outdated, it's not equitable. So on the, on that left graphic, you have a 5/8 meter. This is an account, this is a regular customer, a household that have a 5/8 meter running to their house. Let's say they use 55, 55 units of water in their building cycle, so it's about 41,000 gallons. They're paying approximately twice as much as the same meter for one person in an apartment using the same amount of units, and then it's only because our rate structure is different for single-family homes and multifamily homes. That's not good. We want to make them consistent, and our water consultant found that, and ultimately, that's another issue. Let me go back a slide, I skipped over one. I just want to talk about this real quickly. What you're seeing here is the water rate, the water expense projection over the next five years. What that big blue bar is, it's our current, our most recent water expenses at the tune of about $10 million. The reason why that's so high is we took out a loan to pay for well 16. That practice is common in water utilities, we have to be able to fund infrastructure, so I'll talk about the loans in a moment, but that's why that blue bar is so high. You'll notice in the next years, although it dips down, you do see that the year-over-year expenses are expected to increase. The goal is ultimately source more water locally, it's less expensive than importing, and it's just more efficient. Using water project loans, like the one I mentioned in that blue bar, it's, it's a common practice in water utilities, ultimately, we pay down these loans. It, you know, spending 10 to 15 million dollars on a water well is just typically not something that any water utility can afford in one particular year, so it's common that this happens, but we still have to be able to, that's a debt service that we have to continue to maintain. So in this previous slide that I went over, I talked about 5/8 water meter, and you might wonder why I've honed in on 5/8 water meter accounts. That's because that's the most common account we have in our city. Of about the 7,500 water accounts we have, three-quarters of them are 5/8 meters. So about 5,400 of them are 5/8 meters accounts. When you break that down even further, single families make up about 73% of those 5/8 meters, and then you can see the rest, senior residential, multifamily, and so on. We do have some others that make up commercial accounts and retail industrial, but yeah, that's, this is kind of how the breakdown goes. So three-quarters of single-family homes use under 30 units of water, that's important, I'll get to that when you start seeing the water rates. This number's an important figure, 30 water, 30 water units is about, how many gallons, About 19,000 gallons of water. So this is on a bimonthly cycle, roughly about 19,000, so 30 units of water is what most, three-quarters of our 5/8 users use. Okay, so, let's talk about the water rate adjustments and what they're, what we're proposing, what we're recommending. So after an extensive review, as I mentioned, by the consultant, you know, what the consultant ultimately came up with was a water rate adjustment that would be able to efficiently and effectively produce and maintain the water, our water utility. This is what the expert felt, based on a five-year cycle, would be the most affordable and most efficient for not only residents, but for the city to continue to provide the utility. So what the chart shows you is that every two months, the majority of residential customers will pay an extra about $4.77 every two months during the first year. This accounts for an average use of about 20 water units, or about 14,000 gallons of water per bill, but in some cases, some water, some water customers actually might pay less. I mentioned to you that the schedule is also going to get adjusted, I'll talk about that, where you have multifamily versus single family. Single families might be paying, households might be paying more for the same amount of water usage. With the new schedule and the new rate, actually might be paying less. It all just comes down to what water consumption comes out to per household. So I know this is small print, I won't go through this, these are copies that we'll make available, these are just what the proposed water rate schedule looks like. I highlighted the 5/8 line because that's the most common. Currently, there's a base rate of about $19, $19.21. What it would be going up to, the base rate for a 5/8 line is $20.98, and then again, that's just the base. Water billing is based on consumption, so this is just the minimum, but you can see what it is currently and what it would be going up to. Proposed rates for seniors, which for the city of Paramount is 62 and over, all seniors in this category receive an automatic 20% discount. The 20% discount will be applied every two months on their water bill. Existing seniors will automatically receive the discount, and new 62 and over individuals will be verified when taking payments so that they can continue to get the rate. I mentioned to you that 30-unit marker, that most residents in the 5/8 category tend to use less than 30 units of water per bill. So currently, on the left-hand side is what you see, our current schedule. I mentioned to you how complicated it is, how complex it is. Basically, what we did 20 years ago, or what somebody did 20 years ago, is they created different rates during different seasons for different people, for different tiers. None of that is okay these days, under state regulations. What you see on the right is what we're proposing, which is everybody that has, no matter if you're an industrial account or residential account, if you use that size meter, whether it's 5/8, 1-inch, you're going to, you're going to have the same charges, it's just based on water consumption. So naturally, a single household will use substantially less water than a commercial account, but they're getting charged the same, and that's, that's what's, what the equity part is. So what we're proposing is for the water units to be the base, from 0 to 10 units, which is, that's unchanged, this, you'll, per unit, when you enter into tier one, will be from 11 to 30, and then tier two would be 30, anything over 31 units. What this essentially does, it aligns with our conservation efforts, but also takes into account what residents are commonly using. So we don't want to jab the residents, what we want to do is be able to create a structure that is both efficient, affordable for both the city and the residents, but be able to provide high-quality water. So if you think about it, what this means is, after a resident uses over 30 units of water, they'll get, they'll get bumped into a tier two. So every one unit after 30 will be at that, at that rate. Anything after 10 units will be at the tier one rate, and everyone, no matter who you are, will get a base charge. So as I mentioned, year after year, most residential customers use less than 30 units of water per bill. That remains pretty consistent. We did look back at the history of our water billing for some time, so there are, there are trends, you know, in the summertime, water consumption does go up, but ultimately, it all comes back to under about, averaging, under 30 units of water. Again, these are some small numbers, we'll have these printouts as well for you, this is just to see what a monthly sample bill would look like, these are actual charges based on these units. What I did was I shaded the base, the base fees, these are base, this is what anyone, a water customer, will get at their base, and then what the proposed tier would be right beneath it. So if you're using 30, for instance, 30 units of water, this is what your bill would actually be. So you see that first column, which is current, $84.21, it would, if you're using 30, which again, most use under, as an example, this is a sample, which you'd be at 91, 98. So this is an interesting, this is just an interesting comparison. If you're interested, if you're curious, on the left is what you, where you see where Paramount is in terms of our median household income when compared to our neighboring cities. So here, we're, you know, just above Linwood and Southgate, but, you know, we're roughly in the lower, you know, in the lower end of that spectrum. Then on the right is what the average water rates are. So what our proposed rate would, currently, we are the lowest. If you've seen any publications that have gone out, we're currently below Downey, what we're proposing is to adjust, and it would still keep us commensurate with where our median household income is, and as you can see, where we compare, it's pretty dramatic how high they go. I think the one thing to take away from this here is you look at Linwood and Southgate on the left-hand side, where they're among the lowest income, and then you look at it on the right-hand side and where their water rates are, and it's pretty striking. So this was the chart I was talking about, this was our water bill survey, so this is a survey based on bimonthly water bills. We used the 20 units of consumption, and this is where we rank, currently rank, versus where we're proposing to rank. You'll see in red, Golden State Water, do you remember that small section of Paramount up north? Yeah, that's where they're at right now. So it's, yeah. All right, so we're getting close to the end here, and I, you know, you might ask yourself, well, how urgent is this? And the short answer is, this is very urgent. Us bringing this to the city council as a recommendation, they're going to have an opportunity, as Anthony will come up and talk about next steps, to discuss this, but it's very urgent that we educate the residents on what our current situation is and where we could be if we do nothing. Securing stable water revenues now increases our ability to extract more locally sourced water because it's less expensive, and we move away from purchasing that high, that highly, that high cost of imported water. We are, we're going to be able to maintain our high quality of water as we'll be able to constantly test and treat and provide ongoing preventative maintenance. We'll also be able to address minor and major water pipeline repairs in a timely manner. As you'll see, that image right there on the right, that's an actual image from LADWP from this year. These are common stories that you've heard over the last 5, 10 years, with aging infrastructure, not repairing, and not maintaining water mains. These are real consequences that can occur, and we're no exception to that, so we have to make sure to be able to continue to maintain. And then lastly, I talked about those loans that we have, we do have two loans, we've taken out two loans over the last 10 to 15 years to build these water wells and to maintain them, and, you know, we would be challenged of meeting our loan obligation, our debt service, you know, without adjusting the rates. So that brings me to one of my last slides here, so what happens if we don't adjust the rates? Well, one, if we don't adjust the rates, the city would initially risk defaulting on the existing loans or our debt service, it would compromise our credit rating for future loans for water projects. If we don't address the rates, we'd be very, very challenged to perform serious infrastructure repairs, build any new water wells, which is something that is inevitable, we have to be able to do that in order to sustain. Would compromise our ability to repair and place pipelines, it just wouldn't be fiscally possible. Current water revenue needed to sustain Paramount's local water system would deplete in about one year from now, and ultimately, what it comes down to is the water system and maintaining it, remember, supply and delivery, it just becomes unsustainable. So if that occurs, the local water system may potentially be turned over to a private water company, that would be the eventual, if we do nothing, in years from now, what could theoretically happen? And if that happens, if we lose control, then it could be turned over to a private water company, you know, in which case, you've seen, just from the chart a few slides ago, what that could potentially mean. So to summarize, as I close out, the proposed water rate schedule establishes fair water rates to all customers based on water use and meter size. It also creates a simple rate schedule that meets national standards, and the pricing tiers are designed to meet the city's increasing water expenses, much-needed well improvements, and continue to sustain Paramount's local water system for years to come. I will be more than happy to answer questions, I'm going to let Anthony come up just to talk about next steps and where, where we go from here.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Anthony Martinez, I'm the senior analyst over here at Paramount, I'm assigned to administrative services, and again, thank you very much for your time and to pretty much listen to us here for the water presentation, there it goes. All right, so as Andrew had mentioned, next steps. So under California law, or California law under Prop 218, requires that the city mail public hearing notices 45 days in advance to all public water customers about the adjusted rates. The public, the required public hearing is set for the November 2 city council meeting this year, and written protests may be submitted to the city clerk's office at the address listed on the presentation. So the timeline of events, so here before you are a list of events. July 6, the water rate study presented was publicly presented to the city council. On September 11, the public hearing notices and the around-town newsletter was mailed to water customers and residents. For October this month, we're holding two community education meetings. The first one is tomorrow, Wednesday, October 13th at 6:30 PM at Progress Park Plaza, 15300 Downey, and the second one, which is gonna be a weekend meeting, is gonna be Saturday, October 30th at 10:00 AM, also at Progress Plaza. Andrew and I will be there to also educate the public about our current water rate presentation and situation. And followed by that is gonna be November 2, the city council public hearing meeting. If the rates are approved, then the rates will take an effect July 1, 2022, the start In general, changing the way we use water can drastically reduce our water bill, saving us money annually. The Cal, SoCal Water Smart actually offers residents rebates on water-efficient toilets and water-efficient washing machines. Also, our Paramount water team highly recommends for all water users to periodically check around the house, check around for leaks, which again, if left unchecked, can dramatically increase the bill if it's just not attended to. So we are again drawing near to the presentation, as Andrew had mentioned before we open the floor, for some questions, again, allow me to thank you once again for your time for today's presentation. Andrew?
No, thank you so much, more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, it doesn't look like there's any questions, thank you, gentlemen.
Get out of here, no way, really? That's awesome. Thank you so much, honestly, Chair and members of the commission, your time, thank you for volunteering your time, this is such an important commission, and your, your service to the city can't go unspoken, so thank you so much, we appreciate the time. Thank you, John, thank you, staff.
Okay, let's move into the public hearing section, item number three, General Plan Amendment Number 21-2. It's a resolution to the Planning Commission amending that the city council amend the general plan to add the 2021 to 2029 sixth cycle housing element, superseding and replacing the existing housing element, update the health and safety element, and add the environmental justice element.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're recommending that you remove this item from the calendar, and we will bring it back to you in December.
Okay, and we'll need a motion to make that happen. We get a motion to move this?
This is Commissioner Abrego, I'd like to make a motion that we move the General Plan Amendment Number 21-2 to December.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista? Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Public hearing number four, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment Number 23, a request to amend regulations for condominium conversions in residential zones citywide.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this item, we're recommending that you open the public hearing and continue it to the December, I'm sorry, to the November Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. All right, let's open the public hearing at this time, and then we'll entertain a motion to move this to the November meeting. We need a motion for that.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to move it to the November meeting.
Sparza will second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista? Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to item number five, Reports, Receive and File the North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Planning Commission, this plan is something that we have been working on for a year, and we are presenting it to you this evening as a receive-and-file report. When the environmental impact report is ready, in about one year, the item will be back before you for a recommendation. The plan encompasses the area north of Rosecrans Avenue on Paramount Boulevard. There are currently two specific plans in this area of the city, and the North Gateway Plan combines these two into one plan. The plan calls for residential, retail, restaurants, and office, and the plan calls for the creation of livable, walkable, and sustainable development. The plan also takes into consideration the light rail station at the northwest corner of Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue, and John King and our consultants will give you more details on this plan.
Thank you, John, thank you, Commissioner Weisenberger and Commissioners. I'm just gonna have a little bit of an introduction here, and you'll see that Orlando Gonzalez from Grunin Associates is already ready to, armed and ready to give you some information. I just wanna, just wanna briefly let you know what this is all about, so we have the opportunity, we've had the opportunity over the last year, we've been working on this based on a grant, some funding from SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, for a sustainability-based plan, and you know, with a lot of changes in recent years, Paramount is big on going green and going to sustainable, and that continues into land use, and we've kinda talked about this plan a little bit, I think more so in our Economic Development Board portion of, of the meetings. But I just wanted briefly, what is, what is a specific plan? As a reminder, a specific plan is a specific vision for a specific area, so specific, specific, and it's really a chance to update, I hate to say it, but, you know, codes and rules, they can be very boring, they're very text-based and difficult for the general public to understand. There's a huge movement, and we're part of that, to, to make things more understandable to the general public, make it more, it's kinda funny, but more exciting, more thrilling, let's, let's have a vision for the community, not just about land, but private property, but public property, and tie it all together. How do you get around? How do you, you know, have the wonderful trees planted and, and connected all together and tied in to the upcoming light rail station that's, that's gonna, gonna be here with, before we know it? So that's what this is all about. It's an opportunity, and you'll see here a note about density and destiny, so there is, we do wanna highlight, one thing is, is density, housing density, population density, there's been a longstanding cap of 20, in general, 22 housing units per acre in Paramount, that's based on what the voters put into place in the late 1980s, it was approved by voters. However, the state with the housing, especially with the housing availability and affordability crisis that we're in the middle of, the state is pushing the definition and pushing very hard for, for local cities to have more housing and to really, and with that new interpretations, we cannot, that cap of 22 units per acre cannot stand as is. So with the city attorney's office, we consider, the city attorney's office has helped us to basically consider that, that limit invalid by operation of law, and we have a, we're going with a 30 units per acre maximum in general, citywide, for affordable housing. However, we, this is an opportunity, I say, we say destiny, for cities to chart their own destiny, well, where, instead of a one-size-fits-all, you know, the state wants all urban areas to have the same high density throughout, we, as most cities, we, we think it's our, it's important to choose where those areas are, and this is an opportunity for us to live up to, to that belief, and we think this is probably the best place in, in Paramount, to have a little more, to have a modest uptick in, in housing, if done right, and that's what this plan is, we wanna do it correctly. And so, and with that, kind of a long-winded introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Orlando Gonzalez from Grunin Associates, and also Larry is here from, from Grunin as well. Larry Schlossberg.
Orlando, could you turn the mic on? Thank you.
There you go. You guys can, okay. Thank you all, Commissioners, Chairman, Vice Chair, for having us, and yes, we're here, thank you, John Carver, John King, for that great introduction. Yes, we're here to present to you the North Paramount Gateway Specific Plan, and with the great background that you, that you both gave, I'll just quickly go through a couple of the first slides on the background. As part of our team, just briefly, Larry Schlossberg, of course, the partner in charge, Orlando Gonzalez, the, the project manager, we have Camille Parks as part of our staff, we have an economist, Judy, Judy Taylor, we have a civil engineer as part of our team, JMC Squared, and we have a transportation consultant as well, so that's the breadth of our team. So with that, I'll just get right into the presentation here. I think I have to press this button here? Oh, there you go. Okay, so with the project background, as, as John Carver mentioned, you know, our primary directive for this plan is to combine Clearwater North and Haori Saba specific plans, and as you can see, kind of in the yellowish, yellowish hatch there, in the aerial view there, on both sides of Paramount Boulevard, we've combined both of those specific plans to be one, as outlined by the, the red boundary there, and we've also added additional parcels to the project definition, which are aligned right along Paramount Boulevard, and some there on Rosecrans, Rosecrans Avenue, near the intersection of Rosecrans and Paramount. And we're here to help the city develop a, a plan that will do a number of things, as John King has mentioned, and some of those are, you know, kind of at a high level to promote community health, well-being, economic vitality of businesses and individuals, and also a focus on sustainability, both in landscaping and streetscape side, and also to reduce greenhouse gases and vehicles' miles traveled. In addition, as John King was mentioning, this, this project is going to be part of, or at least incorporate what's going on with the West and, West and Anna Branch Transit Corridor, and so what this plan will do is also provide, you know, provide guidance on how this area can grow, primarily within the half-mile, which is, you know, five to 10-minute, five to 10-minute walk around the station area, and guide how the area can grow in the next, you know, 20, 30, 40 years, and to, to be able to support transit, future transit, if that, that line goes through, and the station is located there at the northwestern corner of Rosecrans and Paramount Boulevard. The specific plan also aims to preserve the existing urban fabric, both of the residential neighborhoods to the west and to the east of Paramount, while still promoting new economic growth, and also promoting pedestrian improvements for safety and community development opportunities for the residents and businesses. So part of the process that, that's gotten us to the point where we, where we are now, as you see there, the process and timeline, is that we've completed, of course, existing conditions analysis, opportunities and alternatives, and we've come to establish a plan component and policy framework that has led us to the draft specific plan that we have now. And of course, this was all aided by numerous outreach events, not only to city departments, but also to the community. And, and we are now at the point where we have the draft ready for your viewing and your comment, and for the public as well. You know, there, some of the community feedback that we had received, some of the most common in one, four events that we've had out in the community, is providing a mix of uses, such as cafes and restaurants, neighborhood market, addressing the lack of on-street parking, improving safety and walkability, and, and streetscape amenities such as benches on Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue. Open space was another one that was a very popular comment, and providing affordable housing for all income levels. And I won't get into this slide as much, I just mentioned some of the outreach that we had done, sorry, next slide, some of the current outreach that has been done up to date includes numerous pop-up events, community workshop, sit-down event, and again, coordination, coordination opportunities we had with the city, with the various departments, and also one specific one with Public Works. We also have an online survey that we've received over approximately 40, approximately 40 responses, I believe, right now. We will, we're thinking of closing that session out right after we present to city council, so we still have some time, but we've gotten some great feedback, and as you see there, two examples there, choosing the three most important issues. I've listed five, it's just because those five were above and beyond the other, the other issues that were listed in that question, and it's traffic and parking, open space, the future light rail station, housing and sustainability. And another example question was what land use improvements would you like to see? And the top three choices there from the community so far in this survey has been open space, commercial, and retail opportunities, and transit-oriented development, mixed So from all the outreach that we've done up to date, you know, very early on in the process, concurrently while we were going out to the community and also coordinating with the city, we began to establish this framework of policies and goals and guiding principles, and here, we just list a few from different categories that I would just verbalize here, that we kind of formed and evaluated, and, and also began to refine from the very beginning, from our very first kickoff meeting. Some of those include from commercial, residential, and mixed-use categories, such as extending downtown Paramount area north to Rosecrans Avenue, along Paramount Boulevard, and reinforce, really, the specific plan area along Paramount as a gateway into the city. Increasing the housing supply, and the housing supply units in the specific plan area, and also developing Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans as attractive corridors in support of vibrant mixed use within close proximity to a future light rail station. Other categories for our goals and guiding principles include urban design, mobility in public realm, parks and open space, and sustainability, such as activating the ground plane, where people walk along the sidewalk to have, you know, active frontages, such as, you know, shops with transparent windows and, and nice signage, that, that would be an example of activating the ground plane. Usage of active transportation, such as walking and biking, which got a very positive reaction from the community, in being able to apply techniques of active transportation to the specific plan area to help ensure that, you know, the residents that actually live there can get to their daily needs within five to 10-minute walk. I mean, grocery store, coffee, something to have for lunch, and, and... It may be grocery store, coffee, something to have for lunch, and, and laundromat, and go back home. And, and so they were very excited about that. And also, in the end, also promoting community health and well-being, as it relates especially to safety in the area. And here, as we begin to get into the discussion of land use, you know, wanted to show you this slide, and, you know, you know, because sometimes there seems to be a, a misperception of density that, you know, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all, and, and when we speak of high density, it's, you know, 10-story towers and whatnot, but it's, it's not the case. And just to, you know, just to understand the way our approach is to preserving the fabric, the existing fabric that exists in the current neighborhoods, these are just four examples of what is there now. And it ranges in from eight units on a certain parcel, to 24 units on, on a parcel, 31, and of course, 306 there at the last, the bottom left, right slide. And these translate in a range of 20 dwelling units per acre, all the way up to 66 dwelling units per acre, and that, that exists now in the specific plan area. And as you can see, you know, these projects don't go more than three to, three to four stories high. And so the existing land use designations are primarily, you know, residential, what you see in yellow there, and some commercials, commercial zones. And as John King mentioned earlier, operating at 22 dwelling units per acre currently, and with a max FAR of 2.0 for the commercial zones. And for our proposed land use plan, we are looking at two residential zones and two mixed-use, mixed-use zones that would begin to introduce commercial activity. The two residential zones that you see at the top, the top of the list there, we're looking at one being 30 dwelling units per acre, which is what you see in the yellow, 40 dwelling units per acre, which is what you see in the orange, once you get near Paramount Boulevard, and that's, would be a zone that would be a transition. So you go from, you know, one, you know, one-story buildings to, you know, two to three-story buildings, and then to the little bit more intense buildings on, that you would see on Paramount Boulevard, especially next to the transit states, transit state, futures transit station, and in so only select locations where you would go a little bit higher. And that's where we go into the mixed-use zones, what is called there MU1 and MU2, which only has a max of 40 dwelling units per acre, so only 10 more dwelling units per acre than, than currently allowed in the other proposed areas. And so here are some examples, example imagery of what that all means. So this is the first, the low-density residential zone that we're proposing at 30 dwelling units per acre. So you can see on the left-hand side what, what that translates into right now, and on the right-hand side, you see an image of, that could be, you know, a triplex, a quadplex, and a diagram at the bottom right of how that urban fabric is, is kind of laid out on a parcel. And so you can see how we're, you know, where our approach is to still fall in line with the character of, and the urban fabric of the neighborhood. So this is low, the lower-density residential zone. The second, the second higher-density residential zone, R M H D. Again, left-hand side, you see images of what exists for, for 40, approximately 40 dwelling units per acre, and an example of what we're proposing on the right-hand side, with an image of what is a courtyard housing project there, and no more than two stories high, and can be accommodated with some surface parking typically, or, you know, another example would be housing on top of a podium for 40 dwelling units per acre, but it would definitely wouldn't need any independent parking structure or anything like that, so, and, so that's 40 dwelling units per acre. And then now we're getting into the last two zones, the mixed-use zones, which are concentrated on Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans. And so this is the less intense of those two zones, MU1. And as, as in the other ones, the left-hand side shows you examples of, of, of the kind of projects that exist now, the kind of buildings exist now at, at that zone, and what could potentially be proposed on the right-hand side at 30 dwelling units an acre, that would have either residential, or can have office, creative office, above a commercial activity at the ground floor, as you see in the, in the image example and, and the diagram there. And lastly, only in, only in select locations, such as next to the transit station, or north, closer to the freeway, where there are larger parcels that could accommodate even not only potential office or whatnot, but, or light industrial, but also other employment opportunities. And this is the, the most intense zone that we have, and it's only 40 dwelling units an acre. And so these are examples, the example on the right of a project that would be 40 dwelling units an acre. And also accompanying and supplementing the, the standards that would go into, you know, each of these different zones are also a discussion of architectural elements. And these are, you know, guidelines and required, and there were some requirements, such as, you know, canopies and awnings, when we talk about streetscape amenities and activating the ground floor along Paramount and Rosecrans, these would be some of the architectural elements that we, that we discuss in the, in the draft specific plan and provide guidelines for it, and some requirements, murals, wall, other wall-fixed artwork, you know, porches, some of these elements that would provide the kind of frontages to Paramount Boulevard and Rosecrans to really activate the space. And as mentioned earlier, sustainability and landscaping is, is also a primary focus of the plan, with such applications as swales, you know, these are all pretty much applications that can be, can be, not only act to convey water, stormwater, and, and prevent a lot of filtering runoff, but also to really beautify further, you know, Paramount Boulevard and, and Rosecrans Avenue, such things as rain gardens and permeable paving, which can be utilized on, in parking courts. So these are examples, as you see in, in the images to the right-hand side there. And just a few more, curb extensions is one very common application that is used very widely in, in many cities, where there's a bulb out at, at the intersection, at the corner, and it, it would do two things, it could provide for such landscaping, sustainable landscaping, as you see in that picture there on the top left, and also it reduces the crossing time, so, and, and provides traffic calming, which is another primary goal of ours, is to provide some traffic calming to Paramount Boulevard, especially, again, to really slow people down and really, you know, give that sense that you've arrived at a place, you've arrived at the city of Paramount, as, and, and really focusing that part of Paramount Boulevard as a gateway into the city. So that's just one application, for example, that could have multiple functions, in beautifying it, and also providing safety as well by reducing crossing times because of the bump out. And, and along the same discussion, you know, we talk about pedestrian improvements. One thing that we're really focused on is, again, you know, Paramount Boulevard and trying to provide a good walking environment. And so one thing that we're saying here is, you know, 10 feet of sidewalk, five feet of parkway, so that's a total from curb to the building face of 15 feet. And we believe that can accommodate such things as street trees, benches, outdoor seating, and other public amenities that would really give Paramount Boulevard that vibrant, vibrant and safe environment for, for the folks to walk through day, day in and day out. And some other, mentioned curb extensions again here to pedestrian lighting, so some of these are other streetscape amenities that we have guidelines and requirements for, if implemented. And in, in addition, still, street trees, you know, wayfinding, and other connectivity enhancements. And bicycle, in terms of bicycle circulation, there's already been a lot of work done on bicycle circulation. For example, the Paramount Bellflower Active Transportation Plan. So, you know, some of these previous plans have identified, you know, some of these proposed bike, either bike, shared bike sharrows or, or bike lanes, but I don't believe those are, are bike lanes, what you see in blue, what you see in blue there, blue dashed lines. But we, what we are going to propose here is, is a few things to, to, of course, to, to implement what's already been previously proposed in, in other plans. But also, one primary component of our plan is the recommendation of removing the truck route designation, which can allow for various opportunities on Paramount Boulevard in that segment. And it's something that we heard over and over again from the community as well, their concern for, for the truck traffic in, in, in that segment of, of the specific plan. Other, other elements besides, you know, bicycle facilities is bicycle parking and bicycle hubs, bicycle hub, which would give bicyclists an opportunity to, you know, to shop for parts for their bike, or fix their bike on-site. I believe that's being proposed as part of the EIR for the current future West Santa Ana Branch Station there, at, at the intersection of Paramount and Rosecrans, so that's, I think, already in the EIR. And again, other programs, and one thing we mentioned is, in, right now, we feel that, you know, the, the culture of bicycling here in Paramount may be a little bit low, but I think with, with education, such as different programs, Safe Routes to School, Bike-to-Work Weeks, and build that, build that culture up, I think there's a lot of people that are, are excited, that we talked to at the farmer's market, the concert series, that, that look forward to, you know, to having their bikes be on the, on the roadway as opposed to the sidewalks. But, but I, I think there's great opportunity here, and I think we, we talked to the folks that were, seemed pretty excited about that future opportunity, if, if possible. And, and here, lastly, on, on mobility, just a couple of proposed sections, apologies if it's a little hard to read there, but essentially what we're doing with the proposed street sections is, it all goes back to that concept, right, of, of providing Paramount Boulevard to be a, a, a stage, a, a, a walkable environment for the folks that live there, and how do we do that? And again, we concentrate on where that walking environment is, and how that is complemented with, with the roadway. And, and it needs to go, I think, hand in hand. I, I think it, it doesn't have to be all just about pedestrians, or all just about bikes, or just all about cars, and I think what we try to achieve with this plan is, is a balance, a multimodal balance of all three. And here, you know, the proposal here for the segment that you see in orange, the top-left, the top-left map, you see a hatch orange, this would be the typical street section for that area in orange, which is pretty much most of the northern part of Paramount Boulevard within the specific plan. And all we're doing there is reducing the lanes by a foot, providing the parking, parallel parking stays in place, and providing sharrows, shared bike lane with the, with the automobile. And again, honing in on providing that 15-foot sidewalk and parkway walking environment for, for the residents. And for the last section near the intersection from, I believe from, there rose there to, to the intersection at the Rosecrans, we have two options that are, that we wanted to propose. One that, again, defines the, the public pedestrian realm for 15 feet from curb to building, and reduces some of the traffic lanes. And this is all, of course, assuming that the truck route designation may be able to, to be eliminated. You know, sharing, the first option, which says figure 0.5 at the bottom, proposes to have bike lanes there, and reduction of, of lanes for traffic calming. And figure 0.4 to the right also does similar thing, and, but only has sharrows, which shares the, the bike with the, with the, with the car. So those are just two options, and look forward to receiving your comments on that. And lastly, for mobility is, of course, parking. It's a, it's a large, it's a very touchy issue with the community and with the city, of course, and so what we have is some recommendations on, on parking, and what we can do to alleviate some of the concerns for that. Some of the strategies, strategies that we've included are right-sized parking requirements, which talks about being able to walk to more than one destinations from a, a particular parking location. So that's, you know, rather than being kind of standalone, you know, strategically located to be able to reach numerous destinations. Demand strategies is the next one, where, you know, and how to manage the impact of on-street parking. And that is focused on promoting a walkable and well-connected environment, which features, features alternative means of travel. So if we are able to provide alternative means, such as, you know, bike sharrows or bike lanes, or, or, you know, widening the sidewalk for pedestrian realm, then things kind of begin to balance out, and that's a strategy that will lessen the demand, can lessen the demand on parking. Implementation, location-based strategies, ship, basically it's shared, shared parking. One example is the future West Santa Ana Branch Station, they, I believe they're going to provide almost 500 spaces, as, as indicated in the ER right now, and can that be shared with the community, with the local businesses, at different times of the day? So that, the park, park share, parking, parking strategy to share is another one. And lastly, the economics of the project. We are, we are focused on a few components to be able to implement this plan, and all the standards that we have indicated in the, in the draft specific plan. And I'll just mention a couple to close out this presentation. One, attract-focused mixed-use and residential development, and this would be to accommodate, to help accommodate the projected 2045 population growth. And it's, it's done through land use policy that will allow for streamlined development and location-appropriate density, which is very important to understand, as I mentioned earlier. Where do we, if we were to include 40 D use an acre, for example, where would it go? Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and we understand that, and that, you know, we choose selective locations to have that little bit of higher density, such as next to a train station, and so that's what that's all about, preserving and creating affordable housing. And this is, this is helpful in terms of, you know, such as inclusionary housing policy, to prevent pretty much displacement, is what we're trying to say there, and also to, also to alleviate some of the issues of the potential overcrowding in the neighborhoods, you know, that causes the domino effect with lack of parking in the neighborhoods and, and so forth. So affordable housing is the critical component of, of, of this strategy. Investing in the public realm, as mentioned, you know, the sidewalks, you know, street trees, benches, you know, and, and that kind of infrastructure in the public realm will help catalyze projects and attract developers to say, you know, you know, we have a beautiful street here, I can see very, you know, very successful development going here, and it'll, it'll help attract developers to come to Paramount and, and invest. And improving retail offerings, just providing various, various types of retail, such as grocery stores, laundromats, flower shops, cafes, and so forth. So having that right balance of retail and commercial activity will also, you know, give Paramount Boulevard and the, the specific plan a sense of destination, that you've arrived at somewhere, at a place. arrived at somewhere, at a place. Well, thank you so much, commissioners. I'm going to pass it back to John King, and I appreciate your time in listening to, to this summary of this specific plan.
Okay. Don't, don't go far, Orlando. And just, just to really wrap it up quickly, so, next steps, I, I mentioned it's taken a year to get here. Believe it or not, it's, it's, it's another year to make it really official. Last week, the City Council approved awarding a contract for the final step, which is the Environmental Impact Report. And that's in, believe it or not, those take, those take a year in California, the EIR. So that's going to start shortly. And next, well, if you have any comments, we'll, we'll bring that, those comments to the City Council next week, next Tuesday, they'll review a draft plan, fold those all into the EIR. It's a different, another company is going to be doing the EIR. And upon approval, the City Council, well, you, the Planning Commission, will make a recommendation for the City Council to adopt this all as a, as a zone change. And it will be with, when it's approved, when a specific plan is approved by ordinance, it becomes, a lot of the land, it becomes the, the regulatory document in addition to the visionary document, the, the vision document. That's, that's really it. And I, I'm sure you have a, a lot of questions, so, and our recommendation here is receive and file and, and to provide recommendations to the City Council. And we're all here if you, to answer those, those questions.
So, sir, we're, we're open for any comments, questions that you might have, or just receive and files the recommended action.
John, I, I've got a question. John King. Excuse me. Regarding the increase in the dwelling units.
Yes.
You say the, the people at Paramount voted in the eighties to make it 22 living units per acre, is that right?
It, yes, for the most part. There was, they did include in that one exception for senior housing, which goes up to 70 units per acre. And we do have, we have built one at that, at least one at that rate, and there's another one pending that's been, well, you remember, you, you approved the concept and will be going into the plan check phase before long.
Now, you're saying the state is coming in and recommending that, that those numbers be raised, is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm happy that the city attorney is here to, to help me out, but I'll just, just to briefly state that, in a nutshell, yes, the, there's statutes, the government code, and in particular, there's the California Department of Housing and Community Development. They're the department that reviews each city's housing plan. We do this every eight years, the housing element, and they will not certify our housing element with, they're, they're, basically, they're looking very carefully and closely, scrutinizing cities more and more. And that's, that's where we are. And I, I think City Attorney Elizabeth Martin can add some more to that.
So, yes, the voters voted for Proposition FF. Unfortunately, as housing, the housing need evolved in California. Legislature has adopted a number of complicated statutes, giving a variety of powers to housing and community development. That's the office that reviews your housing element. If a city doesn't meet what's called its RENA numbers, which is its regional housing numbers, developed by SCAG, the same entity that gave you the grant. Most cities in California do not meet those numbers. There are some who would call them unrealistic, probably most people would call them unrealistic. So when you don't meet those numbers, which are imposed on you, then you need to, you are required to, not encouraged, but required to rezone all or part of your city at a greater density. As a result of that, California courts have reviewed citizen-imposed caps on density and have found, in most cases, that they are inapplicable as in, in opposition to current law. So it's a, put, Mr. King said it very politely, it's a requirement. And you have to have a housing element to be able to approve any development of any kind.
Okay, well, thank you. Even though you say most people would call those the mandate, unrealistic, is the word you said?
The mandate is designed to meet housing goals developed by SCAG that are goals. It is not clear that those are attainable in practicality, but they are goals.
And it's been challenged?
It's been challenged repeatedly, and they have repeatedly lost. In fact, there's a number of cities that challenged their RENA numbers, and all of them lost. A few of them got some relief and had their numbers lowered, but not most. To be honest, your numbers aren't terrible. Your 30, you have 22 units density now, to go up to 30 is, in the overall sense of what it could be required, very good.
So these numbers that are presented to, to us tonight, those have already been approved by this entity?
No, they meet the requirements that the entity has set out in various regulations and code sections, and they can be scrutinized along with the housing element that's been developed. And it will go together as a package to show that you have worked to implement increased densities in a variety of ways so that you can meet those numbers specifically, specifically for lower-income households.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I guess we need to have a motion here to receive and file this report and provide recommendations to the City Council.
Ms. Serias, I'll go ahead and motion to approve and file a recommendation with the City Council.
I'll second it, Sparza.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bautista. Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, item number six, oral reports, City Council actions.
John King already talked about the Environmental Impact Report. That was awarded the contract for this gateway specific plan, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, good. Item number seven, then, any comments from our city attorney?
None, thank you.
Commissioners, any comments tonight?
Not me.
Okay, staff?
I do have one thing I want to give to the commission. There's a conference, it's called the Planning Commissioners Academy. It will take place in March of 2022, so I'm just giving you some early notice here. It's a very good conference, especially if you're a newer commissioner. So I would encourage you to make time for this, if you, if you can do it. We have, it, it's taking place this year in Santa Ramon, which is up near Oakland. We have budgeted for all the commissioners to go up for three evenings, uh, three nights, I'm sorry. And we have airfare budgeted and/or you could drive up. And I'm going to just give you a reminder of this right now, and then as it gets closer, I'll, I'll keep reminding you and hopefully we'll be able to have some of you attend the conference.
Thank you. Okay, in that case, we're going to move for adjournment to our next meeting, which will be November 9th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m.
Good evening, this is Chair Board Member Jaime Abrego. I'd like to call to the order of the Paramount Development Review Board. Can I get a roll call of members?
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza. Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez. Chair Abrego.
Here. Minute, can I get approval for the minute of September 14th of 2021?
Sparza will make a motion in a full of minutes of September 14th.
Uh, Weisenberger will second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Abrego.
Yes. The next item is new business. Item number two is the DRA number 21007, a request by Ernesto Jaramillo Cosmos Drafting Services for Maria Hernandez and Jorge Rodriguez to construct a 951-square-foot addition, 43-square-foot first floor and 908-square-foot on the second floor to an existing 536-square-foot housing unit, and construct a new 425-square-foot attached two-car garage at the, at 13952 Arthur Avenue in the RM, a family residential zone.
Uh, yes, Chair Abrego and board members, this item is a request to construct in addition to a detached house on Arthur Avenue. Several years ago, the property owner received approval to construct two new residential units at the site and is now requesting approval for an addition to the existing unit, which is at the front of the property. And Planning Intern Jessica Guillen will go over the proposal with you.
Good evening, I'll be presenting on development review application number 21007. So the applicant is requesting to construct a 951-square-foot addition to an existing 536-square-foot housing unit, consisting of a 43-square-foot addition to the first floor, the construction of a 908-square-foot second floor, the, sorry, and a 425-square-foot attached two-car garage at 13952 Arthur Avenue in the RM, multiple-family residential zone on a 12,057-square-foot lot. So on July 10th, 2018, the Development Review Board approved an interrelated application, Development Review Application Number 18006, a request to construct two two-story attached single-family homes with two attached two-car garages for the same applicant and property I am presenting to you today. Completed units include three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, one half bathroom, a living room, kitchen with dining area, and a laundry room. Two guest parking spaces were also included in the development. So here is an aerial view of the subject site. The property is on the east side of Arthur Avenue and to the north of House Street. Here are a few pictures of existing homes on the property. The picture above is a picture of the existing 536-square-foot home the applicant is requesting to develop. The two pictures below are the homes that were approved in 2018. Stone accents will be applied to the front of existing homes and as well as restuccoed and repainted to match existing units. All buildings shall include trim, decorative stucco work, accent material, decorative tile roofing and roof overhang. The applicant shall consult the Public Works Department regarding required off-site improvements such as streetlights, sidewalks, street trees, parkway improvements, and curb and gutters, all of which is included in the conditions of approval. Here is a proposed site plan of project. The light blue shade highlights the existing single-family residences on the property. The dark blue shade highlights proposed project. There are two existing guest parking spaces that are located on the south side of the property, adjacent to, to the proposed garage. Access to the garage and guest parking will occur from the existing driveway on Arthur Avenue. Furthermore, final project will include a common space area, a barbecue area, and kids' playground on the east side of the property. Here are the proposed floor plans of project. The new floor area of the first floor would total 579 square feet, which includes a dining area, laundry area, living area, kitchen, a half bathroom, and a 425-square-foot two-car garage. The 908-square-foot second floor addition will include three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a balcony. Lastly, here are renderings of proposed project. Decorative tile roofing material will be installed to match existing units. The proposed addition will receive a consistent stucco-colored coat and stone accents. Decorative trim will be applied around the windows to match existing units, and the two-car garage will have a sectional roll-up garage door to be consistent with the, with the existing units. The Planning Department recommends approval of Development, Development Review Application Number 21007. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to, excuse me. With, this is not a public hearing, right, John?
Uh, no, this is not a public hearing.
Okay, so we just need a motion to approve of the Development Review Application?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Development Review Application Number 21007?
So, uh, Board Chair Abrego, we had a motion by, by commis, Board Member Bautista, and Bautista, and second by Sparza.
Okay, very good. Roll call, please.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Abrego.
Yes. Okay, John, I am sorry, I apologize, I skipped the public comments. Do we want to go through that before we move on to the next item?
Sure, no public comments.
Okay. All right, item number three is the DRA number 21008, a request by Alberto Welchess, M.D., for a professional artist, Tracy Negrete, Negrete, to paint a non-commercial mural on the building wall of 7821 Jackson Street in the PDPS Plan Development and Performance Standards Zone.
Uh, yes, thank you. So this item, excuse me, is a request for a mural on private property across the street from City Hall. This will be our second mural since we changed the municipal code just recently, and John King has this presentation for you.
Thank you, John. And thank you, Board Chair Abrego and, and board members. As John mentioned, 70, 7021 Jackson Street, it is steps away from City Hall, just, just right out the door to the north. Sorry, advanced slides. And the artist, a talented artist named Tracy Negrete, she's recommended to paint a non-commercial mural on a building wall, we're building walls, two, two walls of this building, it's in the PDPS zone. And Tracy, Ms. Negrete, she has worked in Paramount before on a utility box, and this one is at Garfield and Alondra, the southwest corner, basically across from McDonald's. And we get a lot of compliments about how that has, that box has been brightened and up, she's very talented. And then here on this slide, you have a photo of, of how this building looks now, and I think we're all in agreement, it's not the most attractive building in Paramount. The property owner is in agreement. The property owner is Dr. Welchess, who has a practice in a building next door. And he has long-term plans to, to really upgrade this property, bring it up to today's standards, and lease it out. It, this has been in a vacant state for a number of years, you'll see there's actually boarded up windows. And so this is a, kind of a quick fix, but we think it's, be very beneficial to the, to the Paramount community. So I have a, a slide here of what's proposed. And it, it is on a, kind of a limited budget, so it does not have a lot of detail, but in, in this case, we really believe less is more. It does a lot, as a nod to, we, we've talked a lot about sustainability, there's, you know, plants and, and growth, and, so it has a very positive feel, it's colorful, it has a great message. We've been talking also about housing, it says Paramount Home is where the heart is. So it, it has a very positive message about our, this local community, localism, and, and we, and we love it here. So with, with that, we recommend approval. The artist intended, with your approval, she's really ready to go as soon as this weekend, she would be out there with her painting. weekend, she would be out there with her paintbrush, so stop by and say hello. And we'll take, have you take it from here, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve this mural for 21008?
This is Board Member Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to approve.
I'll second it, Sparza.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Abrego.
Yes. Okay, the next item is comments, any comments from our board members?
No.
Any comments from staff?
We have one comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes. No, no, we can, we can work with the artist to lighten that a bit, if that's what you're... Sure.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good, oh, man.
We have a...
Right. Bold, right?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we'll work with the artist on that. Is there consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Nothing from staff, no comments, sir.
Okay, and we went over the board members, no, no comments from the board members, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, John, we'd like to adjourn this meeting. The next Paramount Development Review Board meeting will be November 9 of 2021 at 6:00 p.m. We call to the order for the Paramount Economic Development Board for October 12, 2021. Can I get a roll call of members?
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Gutierrez.
Present.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Sparza.
Here.
Chair Abrego.
Here. Next item is the minute, can we get approval for the minute for September 14, 2021?
This is Board Member Gutierrez, I'll go ahead and motion to approve the minute. We have a first and a second?
Okay, roll call, please.
Board Member Bautista. Board Member Gutierrez.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Abrego.
Yes. Any public comments?
No public comments.
New business, report, oral report, number, item number two?
Yes, John King will give you an oral report on the California unemployment in California.
Yes, I have, thank you, John, and Board Chair Abrego, a very lengthy report on, on employment, so get ready for this. No, quite the opposite. So just some quick facts about the, some new release from the Employment Development Department, the EDD. The employment, unemployment rate as of July is 7.6%, which is 5.6 points better than that of July of the previous year, so head in the right direction. It's California's lowest employment rate since March of 2020. So again, it's, we're making some progress. And from February, February of this year to July, payroll, non-farm payroll has grown 671,000 jobs. Then we've had an average of 111, 850 jobs per month for that period. Nine of California's 11 industry sectors gained jobs in July, including leisure and hospitality, food services, drinking places, education and health, construction, government, that's interesting, and other services. Manufacturing has suffered the largest month-over-job reduction due to a large decrease in transportation equipment manufacturing. I hate to leave it on a sour note, but this is kind of relevant to Paramount. We've, as part of our inspections, we've been doing inspections of metal manufacturing facilities, nine so far in the last three weeks, and each of those has expressed how they have had a dip in employment, they've had to do, had some layoffs, some temporary, some more permanent. But they said they've, they've all have begun hiring back, so hopefully that hiring back continues, so a little bit of positivity there. And that's all, and I do want to credit planning intern Jessica Guillen for, for helping out with, with these facts. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Do have one question on the unemployment rate, what was it, just out of curiosity, percentage-wise, in, obviously before the pandemic in March of 2020?
March of 2020, we do not, we do not have that in front of us, but I'd be happy to email it to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Any comments from our board members?
No comments.
Yeah.
Okay. Comments from staff?
No comments.
Thank you, John. Meeting's adjourned, and our next Paramount Economic Development Board meeting will take place on November 9, 2021. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Abrego.
Night.